I'll call this meeting to order on Tuesday, January 22nd, 2013. I want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight Pastor Mike Parker of the Hurt Road Baptist Church. He will come forward at this time and give us our invocation and also lead us in the place of the flag. So, everyone, please rise.
Father, we thank you so much for an opportunity to come before you in prayer. Lord, I pray that you would give wisdom to this group of men and women as they lead this city. I pray that your people, who are called by your name, would humble themselves and pray, and turn from their wicked ways, and seek your face, and we'll give you all the praise and glory as you heal our land. Lord, thank you for an opportunity to call on your name. I pray that you would help us to seek your kingdom and your righteousness as we live our lives. Lord, I pray that your fame and your wisdom would be spread throughout all of Smyrna as men and women seek you. Lord, I pray that you would also just bless this time during this meeting. Guide the thoughts and the actions of this council. In your name I pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
For those folks that are looking for a church, or maybe you want to change, Hurt Road Baptist Church located on Hurt Road right at the turn. I guess you're still there. So, good church out there. Thank y'all so much for coming tonight. Agenda changes. The only agenda change we have will be a tabling of item 4A, Public Hearing on a Modification of Currently Approved Site Plan and Building Elevations for the property located at South Cobb and East West Connector. That will be tabled till February the 18th. I think that is the only change in the agenda. Under the mayor's report, don't really have anything. Item 4 is land issues, zonings, and annexations. A is a public hearing. Zone request C-12-009, modifications of currently approved site plans and building elevations, 6.23 acre tract, land lot 620 and 677, 4560, South Cobb Drive, Columbia Properties Inc., tabled from December 17, 2012 to be tabled to February 18, 2013. Mr. Lenica.
This is a public hearing. Do you want to ask if there's anyone?
Yeah. If there's anyone here that is here specifically for that issue, even though we're going to table it, we can give you that opportunity at this time to ask about, or if you've got any concerns about this. It will be set for February the 18th.
Thank you. Councilman Fennell and I have talked about trying to get up a meeting with some of the nearby neighborhoods to talk about the proposed rezoning of the property and the plans and to get some citizen input on that. With the holidays, we just didn't have time to do that. That was convenient for everyone. So, at the request of the applicant, I'm going to move to table item 4A, Public Hearing, zoning request C-12-009. It's a modification of the currently approved site plans and building elevations on a 6.23 acre tract and land lots 620 and 677 at 4560, South Cobb Drive, owned by Columbia Properties Incorporated. Table that to February 18, 2013.
We have a motion. And a second to table. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. We've got a new system up here. It's like seven yay. What it says, seven yay. Yes, that's approved, seven zero, table to February the 18th, 2013. Item 5 is previous licenses. We have none. Item 6 is formal business. A is a public hearing, Charter Amendment Ordinance Number 2012-23, amending Section 6C, redistricting plan of the seven wards of the city of Smyrna, tabled from December 17, 2012, meeting. It's to be voted on. Final vote will be February the 4th, 2013. This is a public hearing. Will you please give us the background?
Mr. Mayor, this item has been before this body a couple of times before tonight. Essentially what it is, it's the realignment that needs to occur every 10 years after the results of the annual census is out. By law, we have to make sure that each ward is as balanced as possible. At the last meeting, one of the residents of Ward 2 neighborhood expressed concern that her entire neighborhood was going to be in Ward 2. And so, some council representatives met with the neighborhood and, we believe, have come up with a solution that satisfies what they're after. So, we actually have to have two votes on this. One is a vote tonight, and then vote on it again at the following meeting because it is a change to the charter. And so, we do recommend approval.
This is a public hearing. Do we have the current map? What do we do with that? Can we display that on any of our new technology? Does anybody? Yes. Okay. Okay. So, 20 people going to get it right now. This map does, the new map, is a lot of changes. I don't know if anyone is here that would like to look at the changes. The change that we made from our last meeting, as I understand it, is to move the section in Rose Garden Hills back to where it was and that the lines remain the same. We have Linda Mekers here, who is, Linda, if you want to come forward and just sort of give us a, Linda, we hired her to oversee the redistricting and the redrawing of the lines. She's got a lot of experience with the state. Linda, if you want to just briefly, anyone that's here, I'd like to look at the map to see if your district has changed any, or to see, you know, who will be representing you after this is, will not affect, well, it didn't affect this past election. Don't be bashful.
Can you hear me? I have a pretty strong voice. Can everyone hear me without a mic?
Yeah, we're on TV.
The only change in this map from the map that had been presented previously at public hearings was a result of the comments made at the December 17th City Council meeting. Here we go. Everybody happy?
Yeah, okay. As a result of comments made by the folks in the neighborhood, and I'm having a senior moment remembering the neighborhood names, right in this area, said that in earlier meetings had wanted to be kept entirely together. And that plan did keep them entirely together, but it was entirely together in Ward 2. When they looked at that, they were very, some of the folks that had come to the meeting were very upset, and we had a meeting with about 25 to 30 folks from that neighborhood last Wednesday morning. And what we ended up doing is basically putting the line between 2 and 3 back almost exactly as it is today. The only slight modification was that we got to pull in a couple more blocks of that neighborhood and keep it in District 3 together. They said they would rather remain split rather than remain whole in District Ward 2. So, that's the only change you're going to see is right here in this area. And if you look at the existing map and look at this map, the lines will look almost exactly the same, almost can lay on top of each other. And there seemed to be a consensus at that meeting was that that was preferable to them. Rose Garden, Davenport, thank you. Any questions?
Anyone else want to make any comment? This is a public hearing. As we mentioned earlier, this will be adopted February the 4th. There'll be another public hearing, and then we'll have the vote on February the 4th. I'm sorry, February the, that's right, February the 4th. Yep. Ms. Nolowicz.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that, you know, I think it was clear at the last meeting that, I know I was taken by surprise, the mayor was taken by surprise by the feedback that we received from the community. And last week, Councilwoman Bluestein, Councilwoman Lenica did a wonderful job of leading the meeting, because I was not able to get there right when it began, and neither was Councilwoman Bluestein. We had some other unavoidable issues come up. We got there, but there had been some ongoing dialogue with the neighborhoods, and I think we were clear from the beginning of the process that we wanted to defer to what the community wanted to do. And thankfully, Ms. Mekers was able to, she knows the technicalities and the process so well that we realized that we could defer to what the community wanted to do, the changes that they wanted to see, without having any, really, ripple effect on the other ward boundaries, which I think was a positive thing. But I think it was a good, it was a very thoughtful discussion. I think it's, the conclusion is reached that I think is, I think that everyone in the community is, I think they're resolved to do it. And I think that, oh, I know that I'm comfortable with this map going forward, and I hope that everyone in the community is comfortable as well, because we really did try very hard to defer to the wishes of the community.
Any other comments? You have a council member? Anyone in the public? Ms. Ann Griebel?
I just wanted to add to what Terry, Ms. Councilwoman Anolowicz had to say. We were trying very, very hard to reunite the community, but yet we could see that that was not going to work in their best interest, nor they thought. And so, rather than, we had the meeting, we had a really good turnout, and I felt very comfortable at the end of the meeting knowing that they were pleased with the outcome. And thank the Lord for Ms. Mekers, because she was able to explain the ramifications and by moving this line and that line and so on and so forth, that made it so much easier on everybody to understand. So, I'm pleased with it. I think Mrs. Anolowicz is pleased with it, and I know that the community is happy. So, thank you.
Ms. Wilkerson.
I just wanted to tell any folks out there that are listening, that are in Ward 5, that Ward 5 does, changes very little. And just to let anyone know that there's a condominium complex, Surrey Park, that was in Ward 5 before, and that part will be going to Ward 3. But other than that little change, everyone else will remain in Ward 5.
Yeah, the comments, there are some major other changes, 7 and 4 and 3. Okay. Mr. Fennell?
Thank you for noting that, Mr. Mayor. We have discussed this at our previous public meeting, but I did want to continue to reiterate the challenge that we have every 10 years. According to the United States Constitution, we must redraw all districts to achieve parity so that each district allows for each of us to represent an equal number of people as close as possible as can be done. And unfortunately, the growth, unfortunately, the growth for Smyrna, a good chunk of it in the past 10 years has been in Ward 7. While we're proud of that, and I'm happy about that, and I'm happy to represent all the residents of Ward 7 as it's currently constituted until 2015, so I'll still be your councilman until 2015, I will lose roughly 40% of my district, and that will be the Bennett Woods, Kingsprings area, and everything down to the Silver Comet Trail. Everything south or west of the Silver Comet Trail will become the new Ward 7, which is currently in Ward 7, but I will lose an awful lot of folks to, and I think Mr. Welch will acquire a lot of those new residents in his district. So, over the next three years, he and I are going to be working closely together to make sure that everybody in Ward 7 is well taken care of. Mr. Lenica and I share some common boundaries in Ward 6 now and in future where we're juggling a couple of neighborhoods, but we're going to continue to double team that and serve that. To that end, he just mentioned a town hall meeting that we're going to hold on this zoning property next month. And our goal there is just to continue to seek input from residents to make sure that we're fulfilling the expectations that you have in terms of both service needs that the city is providing, but also what you want the city to look like down the road. And that's one of the elements that's really important to us when we're talking about what businesses we're luring to or permitting or zoning for the future of Smyrna and the future growth of Smyrna, particularly down in Wards 6 and 7 in that case. But redistricting is a responsibility that we have, and we're happy that we have the talent of Ms. Mekers to help us, to guide us through the process. She knows more about this particular process in Georgia than any other living individual, and I'm proud that she's taken time to be a part of this process for us. But I did want to ask one last question of her before she departed. And at the recent meeting that you attended, in the proposed changes between Districts 2 and 3, the conclusion that was drawn at that meeting by the residents in attendance, the council members in attendance, and your professional opinion is that the outcome achieved by the map you presented will meet expectations of both the Justice Department and satiate the neighborhoods that are presented and need to be represented in future?
Okay, let's address the needs of the neighborhood first.
Okay.
Out of those 25 or 30 people, there were people there that still wanted to be kept together, and it was a long discussion about census geography, which we do not have a lot of control over, and there's no boundary to separate them from an adjoining apartment complex, which makes the numbers not work. Once we got through that and we tried everything, and they could see what the technical problems were, then it was up to them to make a decision whether they wanted to compromise and pretty much stay the way they were rather than their original goal of staying together. They repeated over and over again, they still wanted to be together if that were possible in the future. So, it was a compromise on their part. So, but they all understood, and I think that was the consensus we came out of that meeting with.
Okay.
As far as the Justice Department guidelines are concerned, Section 5 requires that there be no retrogression in the numbers of African-Americans per district.
That's no, fewer number than it currently exists.
Right. So, whatever the current number is, the new proposed plan, those numbers should not be any less. If there are more, then that's great.
And that plan achieves that result?
Yes. It stays the same, though. The previous plan before, when we had them together, the numbers for District 2 were about 2, 2.5 percentage points higher. They were not a majority, but they were a higher number in that district. This was pointed out to them at this meeting so that they would understand, because the Justice Department will probably call members of the minority communities, not just the African-American, but we've got Latino and Indian, and we have a lot of, we're very diverse in Smyrna.
Correct.
So, that they were prepared, I thought, that they understood that the numbers did go down, but that was still their preference. And that will make a big difference at Justice Department, the fact that we did not retrogress and the fact that we did not enhance because of the wishes of the neighborhood.
Just to be fair and clarify, there were two proposed plans, one that we considered earlier and the one that is here before us. Both of those do not have any retrogression compared to the current plan we have, is the statement you were making, but that the plan that we looked at previously did have 2 percentage points higher in minority participation.
The new proposed plan, which is called Smyrna Plan 6, has no retrogression as compared to the current plan that was drawn after the 2000 census. It does have a lower number than an earlier proposed plan, and sometimes justice will look at all those plans in question.
Got it.
So, that was what I wanted to be sure that the community understood.
And having dealt with the Justice Department, you feel confident that they will appreciate that the conclusion drawn by the residents affected was an acceptable plan?
I think so, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we, I don't think a vote is, we don't need to take a vote? I think we do? Okay. Vote to accept the plan, then, is that correct? As submitted? Okay. We have to do this again on February the 4th. A motion by Ms. Nolowicz. Seconded by Mr. Welch. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, 7-0. Thank you very much. Item B is appointment of Ward 2 representative to keep Smyrna beautiful to fulfill a term to expire December 31, 2013. Ms. Bluestein.
Yes, at this time, I would like to make a motion to appoint Pamela Dobbs to be the Ward 2 representative to keep Smyrna beautiful, to fulfill a term to expire December 31, 2013.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Just a little delay there. Approved, 7-0. Correct. Item C is appointment representative for Ward 2 to Smyrna Hospital Authority for the term expired May of 2016. Ms. Bluestein.
Yes, at this time, I would like to make a motion to appoint Ron Gooden, a Ward 2 person, to be representative to the Smyrna Hospital Authority for a term to expire May 2016.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, 7-0. Item D is appointment of the board member for Downtown Development Authority to fulfill a term to expire 2013. This is for Sean Murphy, who resigned. Terry Nolowicz, you want to make that motion? Jim DeMure? Yeah, Jim Delmar?
Yes, thank you. At this time, I would like to move to appoint Jim Dulmer, Dulmer, as the next board member to the, serve on the downtown, the newest board member to serve in the Downtown Development Authority. This will fulfill a term that will expire in April of 2013.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, 7-0. Something y'all need to discuss, because I can't, I just heard y'all discussing something about this. Okay. E is approval of hiring library director. I'll get Mr. Eric Taylor to give us the background.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, at the last council meeting, we announced that Mary Wallace Moore would be the sole finalist for the position. She will be relocating from Huntsville, Alabama, starting February 25th, and so therefore we would like to officially recommend the approval of her hiring.
Ms. Susan Wilkerson, who chairs the Library Committee.
Yes, so, I've met Ms. Mary Wallace Moore, and I'm very excited about her coming to the city of Smyrna. She's got over 15 years' experience at the Huntsville-Madison County Public Library, and so, at this time, I make a motion to approve the hiring of Mary Wallace Moore.
Motion of second. She's not made any chances here. I know she's excited about coming to work here, and we're excited about her coming. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Looks like she's in, 7-0. Approval of, item F is approval of the hiring of the chief of police. Mr. Taylor, the background, please.
Mr. Mayor, also mentioned at the last council meeting, we announced that David Lee would be our sole finalist to replace the retiring Stanley Hook. He has accepted the position with a starting date of February the 4th, and I do see that he's here tonight. I'm glad to see that he showed up tonight, working for free already. But, you know, we do want to go ahead and recommend his approval.
Mr. Ron Fennell, who chairs the Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been my pleasure to join with other colleagues as we have provided an extensive search to find this talented individual to come lead our department. Sitting back there, I do want to have him come forward and say hello, but he's sitting with the active chief, Mike Brown.
Let's do the vote first.
Yeah, he's waiting to see if we're going to vote first. But after 56 applicants, a screening process, and a full interview process, we are proud to select the finest police officer in the state of Georgia that we had available to select to be the next Smyrna police chief, and we're happy to have David Lee join us February 4th. Thank you.
David, you want to come up? I'm pretty confident you're going to get four votes. I see that Deputy Chief Mike Brown is also here. I'm sure he'll have a report to make, but Mike is our interim chief and has been here a number of years. How many years, Mike?
30 seconds.
Welcome, chief.
Thank you. Once again, I want to thank everybody, the mayor and the council, and Mr. Taylor for selecting me. I'm proud that I'm going to be given this chance. I need to step up. Okay. I'm proud to be given this chance, that I'm going to get to work with both the men and the women of the Smyrna Police Department and to provide some new leadership and hopefully to, you know, bring the department to a much higher level. I'm real excited, and I want to know that I appreciate the trust that you've placed in me, and I want you to know that I will never do anything to embarrass you or the citizens of Smyrna. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Look forward to getting started. Mr. Mayor, I move approval.
Motion in a second by Mrs., I'm not sure if it was Ms. Pritchett, or, but anyway, Ms. Pritchett. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? That's approved, 7-0. We look forward to you coming to work in Smyrna. Obviously, a tremendous upgrade from Marietta. But to Ron Fennell, who only been on council for a year, showed a tremendous amount of leadership in the selection committee, and I thank you for the time that you spent on that committee, Ron. Item G is commercial, approval of 2013 commercial sanitation rates. Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Mayor, in our contract that we have with Advanced Disposal, Advanced Disposal provides all the commercial sanitation service here in the city. We are on a five-year contract with them, and there is an escalator clause for a 3% increase effective March the 1st, 2013. And rather than the city eat the cost of the increase, we're asking that the council approve passing that increase along to the commercial sanitation users.
Doesn't have a sponsor on there, but I'll ask Ms. Terry Nolowicz, who chairs the Finance and Administration.
Yes, I like to emphasize that this is simply a pass, this is a pass-through of the rate increase that's coming from the provider. So, this is not something that the city's doing arbitrarily or on a whim. This is simply a pass-through of the increase.
Form of motion?
Yes, at this time, I would like to move to approve item 8, I'm sorry, we're on 6G. It is the approval of the 2013 commercial sanitation rates.
Motion of second. Any discussion?
Yes, there is.
Mr. Welch.
Is it determined, it's part of the contract, it's the five-year contract, and this is the escalation.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, six one, with Mr. Lenika opposing. Item H, approval of ordinance 2013-01, amending Article One, Chapter 86, Section 86-4, services rate, city of Smyrna Code of Ordinances. Mr. Taylor, the background?
Mr. Mayor, last summer, you may recall, mayor and council approved an ordinance that automatically passed along rate increases at the same time, at the same rate as our water provider does. That way, we don't have to have a vote on it every year. We're asking that the council take the same action with commercial sanitation rates, and this ordinance will do that.
Ms. Terry Nolowich, who chairs Finance and Administration.
Yes, sir, yeah, this is something that I think that makes sense, just as I thought that having them automatically be passed through for water makes sense. Again, this is a business decision more than it is anything else, and as the commercial rates increase, what we pay, it's only right, I believe, that we pass that along as a straight pass-through, so this will then put this in the ordinance. So at this time, I would like to move to approve. It's item 2013-16 on the agenda. It is item 6H. This is the approval of ordinance 2013-01, amending Article One, Chapter 86, Section 86-4, service rate, city of Smyrna Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Please vote. That's approved, five two, with Mr. Lenika and Ms. Wilkinson voting in opposition. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Eight is consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
We have three items on the consent agenda this evening. Item A is an approval of the January 7th, 2013 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is an approval to use council members on January 17th, 2013, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM for the Heritage findings HOA meeting in Ward Six. Want to note that this is being done retroactively. And item C is an approval of the street paving projects list.
You have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Have a motion in a second. Mr. Fennel, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, seven zero. Item nine is committee report. We'll start tonight, Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public safety, we had an interesting year-end with the retirement of the chief, and we have Acting Chief Mike Brown here. Mike, did you have anything you wanted to bring to the attention of the city? Yes, thank you, sir.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. First of all, I'd like to just take a personal moment and thank Chief Stan Hook for 23 years of service to the city of Smyrna as Chief of Police. It was a pleasure to serve under him, and we certainly wish him well and his endeavors, and I hope he plays golf till he's 100 years old. Additionally, the police department would like to welcome Chief David Lee. We are so proud to have this man as our leader coming in. I've known David for quite some time. He is an honorable, extremely intelligent individual, and it's going to be different, and I think everyone in the police department, the citizens, as they get to know Chief Lee, are going to be extremely pleased. Having said that, just to give you a little bit of information about what's going on in the police department. As you know, we have been somewhat short-staffed for some time, but we're making great strides forward in that area. At the end of December, we had four graduates from the police academy start with us through our field training program, which they are currently in, and hopefully will be ready for release sometime in late spring, early summer, to add to the numbers of the police department, the uniform force. Additionally, today, we started a certified police officer from...came to us from Atlanta Police Department, and that would be a much shorter process than getting that individual ready to get on the road and also serving the citizens. We're working on three more new hires currently in background investigations. These are not certified, but they're officers that we'll bring in and send through the police academy and also through the field training program. On a positive note, as most of you know, we have been short...three motorcycle officers who each were injured on duty in severe accidents. Two of those officers have returned to work. They're not at full capacity yet, but Officer Jed Minyard has come back and is helping us with our quartermaster duties. And today, we learned that Officer Gene Crawford, who was in a serious accident last May, will be returning to us on Monday, so we're very pleased about that. Gene's going to help us out in the detective division. Again, his duties will be somewhat limited for some time as he continues his rehabilitation, but it was good to see Officer Crawford today, as he came into my office, and see him standing upright. As you know, he received extremely serious injuries, as did Officer Minyard, so it's good to have them back. Just to give you a little idea of what's been going on, some of you may have seen on the news recently, a carjacking that took place out of apartment complex on Spring Road, in which a woman, as she got home, was abducted...excuse me, not abducted, her car was taken from her gunpoint. And she was on the news, very pleased with the work of the Smyrna Police Department, as we had an officer close who immediately got behind the car, pursuit ensued, and we were able to take all of the individuals into custody. She came to my office this past week to thank all of the officers involved, the unbelievably quick response, and it was just, it was a good thing for the Smyrna Police Department. Corporal Lieber, Dennis Lieber, was instrumental in that. And, you know, there's a little bit to be said for being in the right place at the right time, but there's a lot to be said for being out there and available and doing the work as you're supposed to be doing. So Corporal Lieber did a great job with that, and no one was injured as a result of the pursuit, and a lot of very bad people were put in jail that night, so it was a good day. We learned today that a 1998 rape case that we had here in the city has been solved through DNA of a prisoner in the state system who was just recently put into the state system. And because of the program in place, we are able to clear that 1998 rape case. Rape case, we're very pleased about that. And Detective Singleton and Minyard made multiple arrests in a burglary ring where we were having a lot of trouble out in what we refer to as Charlie Zone, Cobb Parkway area. They made a number of arrests, which cleared up that burglary ring and cleared many burglaries and a lot of recover of property. So obviously, we are also very pleased about that situation. I don't believe that you have all received the year-end report yet. I don't think so, because it's not complete, but I was able to get into records, it's being worked on today, and coax out of them at least part of what the year-end report tells us. Just to give you a basic overview, overall, Part I crimes in the city of Smyrna for the year 2012 are down 1%. Now, that's not a huge victory, but it's a beginning, and we, with the leadership of our new chief, certainly look to improve upon that. Most of the Part I crimes were about the same as last year. Some of them were down more significantly than others. Our biggest increase was in motor vehicle thefts, which are up 24%. And that's something that we are working on. We have a grant for an automatic license plate reader, which is just about at the final stages, and will be coming for y'all or coming before you for approval. That's going to be part of our plan to reduce motor vehicle thefts in the city of Smyrna. Overall, calls were down just a little bit. Accidents were up, and accident-related injuries were up just a little bit. So those are things that we also have to work on. We've, you know, working on more traffic enforcement, have some plans, and I'm sure Chief Lee has some plans for us that will help reduce some of those accidents in the city of Smyrna. I think that's about all that I have. I would be glad to entertain any questions that you may have for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Chief, thank you. And now, Fire Chief Jason Lanyon has some information he'd like to share with the public. For those of you always coming forward, for those of you as you come in contact with our public safety professionals in the community, do what I do, please, and say thank you to them every time we come in contact. They're very important to what we do, and they put their lives on the line 24/7/365, and we can't thank them enough, and please join me in doing that. Thank you, then. Chief Lanyon?
Good evening, everyone. An update as to the status of the fire department. We are currently down four positions and have been for a while. Two positions should be filled within the next week. We're in the final phases of hiring on those two. And of those four, one of our gentlemen moved to Minnesota. I keep thinking he'll be back after I watched the weather today, and they didn't get above zero.
Maybe he can't get out.
So we may get him back. This evening, I wanted to talk about some issues that deal with safety that is specific to wintertime issues. A lot of times, I'll come up here and talk about storm-related issues. It's usually tornadoes or severe weather, but I want to talk specifically about some of the problems that occur in the wintertime that affect the fire department and affect the citizenry. Specifically, I want to start out by talking a little bit about safety tips for wood stoves and fireplaces. It is the right time of the year where everybody's using those devices, and we're seeing more use of those with the economy the way it is and people trying to save money on their utility bills. They're looking for alternative heating methods, and there are some dangers that come with that if it's not done right. So I just want to run through a few of these. A lot of these are common sense. You'd be surprised that most of the emergencies that we respond to could have been prevented very easily with a little bit of common sense. So specifically, wood stoves and fireplaces, it's important to make sure that the stove is installed correctly. A stove that's...a wood stove that's installed correctly should be 36 inches from anything combustible. They should be built by a manufacturer and tested. Believe it or not, people still do try to build their own wood stoves. The chimney that's attached to the wood stove or the fireplace needs to be inspected annually. A lot of chimney fires that we go on, we'll find that the chimney hasn't been inspected in years. You should not use flammable liquids to start wood stove fires or fireplace fires. They should be started with a small amount of paper and fireplace logs. They should not...you shouldn't be using gasoline and kerosene inside a fireplace. Should keep a screen in front of a fireplace to keep embers from starting a fire. That does happen a few times a year. The stove...if you use a stove that's enclosed, you need to make sure to let it get really hot at least a couple of times a day if you're going to burn it for a long period of time. If not, soot will build up in it, and you will end up with a pretty good fire. Don't, like I said, don't use excessive amounts of paper, but that is what you should use. Never burn charcoal. We have encountered this before. Charcoal actually puts out large amounts and lethal amounts of carbon monoxide. A note about carbon monoxide, you can't smell it, you can't taste it, you can't feel it, and it will kill you. Keep flammable materials away from the mantle. Before you go to sleep, make sure the fire's completely out. Never, ever, ever close the damper on the flue without knowing if the fireplace is completely out before you go to sleep. What will happen is, once you shut the flue off, the fire will actually gain...the embers or the coals can start producing carbon monoxide, and again, you've got a carbon monoxide problem. If you use synthetic logs, you should never break those apart at the end if they don't burn all the way. They actually burn uneven because they're synthetic, and they have the potential, again, to produce a lot of carbon monoxide. So just some common things about fireplaces and stoves. The next thing I want to talk about, just a few things about furnaces. A furnace should be inspected once a year also. Furnaces that aren't inspected and maintained, again, can produce carbon monoxide as well as start a fire. When it comes to repairs to furnaces, they should be repaired by somebody who is trained specifically for that. A lot of furnace issues that we run up against, you will see where the homeowner tried to repair the furnace, and they weren't qualified to do so and actually created a dangerous situation. You need to check on the furnaces and the fireplaces. The flues and the pipes that are attached to these, they're sealed, and a lot of them are double-walled. If you see black soot around the seams, that means that your interior wall could be compromised, which means you could be getting carbon monoxide as well as heat inside the house. Moving on to some final, just general fire safety tips for this time of year, you should never use a range or an oven as an alternative heating device. Again, you could have carbon monoxide issues, toxic fumes. If you use an electric heater, there's a couple of things you really need to know about an electric space heater. There needs to be 36 inches of space around them. They need to have a tip-over device. If your heater doesn't have a tip-over device, you should not use that. A tip-over device is designed so that if the heater is kicked over, it will automatically shut itself off. Also, the extension cords, a lot of people use too small of extension cords. The extension cord should be rated for the amperage that the heater draws. A lot of small space heaters draw a lot of amperage. Never put electric space heaters in bathrooms or other areas such as kitchens where they may come in contact with water. And the last general fire safety tip about winter is frozen water pipes. Should we get into a situation where you have frozen pipes? If you intend to thaw them out, you should not do that with a device that produces a flame, such as a torch. Blow dryer or heat gun is usually sufficient, but you'd be surprised how many people use a torch or some other type of flame device. The problem is, the metal can actually get hot enough to conduct heat all the way back up into the wall and start a fire away from where you're at, and you not even realize it. Finally, and lastly, about fire safety, you should make sure that on every level of your house, you have a working smoke detector. I probably talk about that four or five times a year, but I can't preach that enough. There's been some recent local media, pretty sad situation, where four young children died in a fire out east of here, and there was a smoke detector in the house that didn't have batteries in it, a 50-cent battery could have made the difference, so again...
That was the one where the child actually was lighting matches with it.
Correct. One child...one of the five children actually caused the fire and killed four children, so terrible situation. Moving on to just a few comments about winter preparation. We talked a little bit about safety, but I can't emphasize enough to you that as we deal with the winter storms or even into the spring, if we get a really bad storm, you need to be prepared to be self-sufficient until we can get there to help you. And sometimes, that could be a day or two. Now, that would be a really bad storm, but it could occur. Everybody remembers what happened just two years ago, January 9th, 10th, and 11th. We had a pretty good little snowstorm. So I would direct you to ready.gov, www.redy.gov. There's some great checklists. A lot of things that you would think of are on the checklist. Everybody probably thinks of food and water, but there's a lot of things people don't think of. You need your medicine. You need things to take care of your pets if you're going to be stuck there for a few days. They have checked...like I said, they have checklists, and they also have emergency procedures manuals. All that's free. You can download that and have your kits ready so that you'll be prepared in the event that we do have some type of major storm. And as everyone knows, in Georgia, you just don't know. I mean, I've heard it's going to be 60 in a couple of days, and everybody knows what it feels like out there now, but that's basically all I have if anybody has any questions.
Outside burning, Jason?
Outside burning.
Not alone.
I know that I called you about an issue on Potter Springs Street, and I don't mind bringing it up, because I'd had a complaint from a citizen, and your folks responded quickly to it. I understand that person had been actually burning in his yard for about a week or so. And not just leaves, I'm talking about material, pipes, plastic.
Our standing, basically, the standing order is there is no outside burning in Smyrna, okay? The county still allows it. Occasionally, we run into situations where people are on the border that it appears that it's in the city and it's not. There are some stipulations in there for recreational fires, and they need to contact the fire department for the rules that go with that, because it's very strict as to what you can burn, how far from the house, how it's attended, but just generally burning stuff to get rid of rubbish or tree clippings, that is not allowed in the city. Specifically, the situation you're talking about, we researched that a little bit today, and we are working on dealing with that situation, but what we found a little further today is that if you decide to burn plastic or rubber or your trash, your household trash, you're not only violating what we're saying, but you're violating the EPD state regulations. And if we have to deal with that, it's not going to be a good thing. The judge is not going to like that, and that's how we have to deal with those situations. When you violate things that involve harming the environment or the environment of your neighbors breathing plastic that's burning and rubber that's burning, we really have no choice in the matter that we have to deal with that quickly, and we have to deal with it decisively. So the easiest thing to do is just don't burn anything.
Well, thank you, Jason, because I text you sometime yesterday, and you hit somebody on it pretty quick, so.
The only...last thing I would say is, I asked for a shorter police chief, and y'all got a six-footer. Come on now.
Life's tough for you, isn't it?
Life's tough for you, isn't it?
Thank you, Jason.
I want to thank the Fire Chief and the Police Chief, Mike Brown, and our incoming Chief, David Lee. We're looking forward to working with you. And please, everybody, while you're out there, drive defensively, but drive safely, and please, don't drink and drive. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Mr. Lenick.
Thank you, Your Honor. Kay Bullock, our HR Director, has a brief report for us this evening.
I know it's like 40 degrees outside and it's only January, but we are being proactive, and we now have posted all of the positions for Taliesin Pool that will open up in May. So, I wanted to let everybody know, it's not too early to get your applications in for pool manager, head lifeguard, lots of lifeguard positions, and a handful of cashier positions. We are taking those applications. We'd love to go ahead and get as many of them filled in advance. Hopefully, they'll all be certified as lifeguards, but I believe there's some other opportunities where they can get certified between now and May. So, like I said, it's not too early. Come on, get the applications in. Makes our life a lot easier to get it staffed ahead of time before it starts opening up. The other thing is, we have a couple of other part-time positions on the board. Part-time community center supervisor is available for working over. I believe it's at, this one will be actually at the community center. We will have a couple of other positions, I believe, coming on the board before too long this week. And last but not least, HR has been extremely busy the last two or three weeks. We've had three positions either closed or closing tomorrow that we have received. One position was over 450 resumes in 10 days. Two others are well over 300. So, trying to go through that many applications in that short a period of time all at one time has been quite a load on the HR staff. We're trying to sort through them, get them out and about, but believe me, there's a lot of people looking for jobs. We don't have any problems with people posting, let me tell you that. It's getting out there very quickly. So, please, if you need to put in an application, you can do it. Right now, we're in the process of changing HR systems. We've gone live just this past week with our Muniz, Tyler Muniz program, and it will have an applicant tracking program. We have not gotten trained on that. That's coming up in a couple of weeks. So, we are going to be switching over to a new applicant tracking system so people can post their applications online. But in the interim right now, we are taking applications either by coming on in, walking in. You may fax in your application or resume to 770-319-5330, or you can email it to our HR email, which is hr@smyrna.gav. So, three different ways of getting them in, and we hopefully will have all these positions filled in the very near future.
Thank you, Kay.
Thank you, Kay. I also want to thank you for coming into the office Sunday morning to do some work on a holiday weekend. We appreciate that dedication. I want to thank the Vinings Glen Homeowner Association Board for inviting me to their meeting here recently. Also met last week with the Heritage Advanings HOA for their annual meeting. Had a good meeting, good discussion. This Thursday night, Corky Welch and I, Councilman Welch, will be meeting with the Forest Hills Preservation Group. Look forward to seeing those folks. With that, I yield.
Susan Wilkinson.
I'd like to call Steve Ciaccio for his report for Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to let folks know that the Spring and Summer Recreation Activities Guide will be available soon. Information about summer camps, specialty camps, summer sports clinics, that sort of stuff will be out in a couple of weeks. Also, on February 17th, from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m., the City of Smyrna will host its first bridal show down at Taylor Bronner Park where the Taylor Bronner House and the Bronner Hall are at. Fashion show for brides and guests. The Smyrna Bridal Show site is smyrnabridalshow@gmail.com. The telephone number is 678-631-5545. Again, 678-631-5545. That is the Bronner Hall line, and my staff will ask, answer questions for those vendors or interested brides. For brides, this is a great opportunity to meet vendors and learn what your special day can be. So, please show up, February 17th, 12:00 to 5:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. At this time, I'd like to call Tammy Sadler Jones. She's going to give our report for the library. Thank you.
Good evening. I am making announcement for the Smyrna Public Library. The first announcement I'd like to make concerns the Murder Goes South Festival that's going to be this coming Saturday, January the 26th, over at the Smyrna Community Center, and that event is going to be from 9:00 a.m. until 4:30 p.m. It's $30 per person, and that includes lunch. And the Murder Goes South, pardon me, is a festival for readers and writers of southern mysteries. So, please come out if you have an opportunity. And again, that's going to be at the Smyrna Community Center and not at the library. The second item concerns reading with Ringling Brothers, and that program is through our Children's Services Department. A parent can go by and pick up a rewards card for their child, and after their child reads five books, they can take that card back to the Children's Services Department where they will stamp it with five elephant stamps for a free ticket to the circus. And the circus will be in the month of February and March at Phillips Arena or at the arena at the Gwinnett Center. So, please check out the events for the library and go to smyrnacity.com if you have other questions. And for the children's program, if you have questions, parents, you can contact Laura Thank you very much.
Not quite as good as Mr. Siegler, but...
Well, I forgot the hands, okay.
What can I say?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you, Tammy. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Welch, Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spoke with Scott Stuckes before the meeting, and he told me I could give his report that it has rained so much in the last month that not very much has happened in the Public Works Department as far as our projects goes. I would like to call on Ann Kirk to come up and speak with us about Smyrna Clean and Beautiful, or Keep Smyrna Beautiful. I know she has something exciting she'd like to talk about tonight.
Yes, we have several announcements that are very good news for our Smyrna citizens. The first is a shredding event at the Island Wolf Center on March 16th. This will be from 9:00 a.m. until noon, and Iron Mountain will be providing free shredding of up to 100 pounds per vehicle. So, please come out. We've had many, many calls about this issue, and we hope everybody will take advantage of this. Our gardening classes for the spring, planting your spring garden, will be this Thursday and it's from 7:00 until 8:30. And on Saturday, the repeat of the same class from 10:00 a.m. until 11:30. These will be at Bronner Hall. Linda Holzansky, who is a master gardener and an excellent teacher, will be conducting the class, and I hope, we do have about seven spots left. You may call my office at 770-431-2863 and leave a message, and we will put you on the list. Just let us know if you want the Thursday evening class or the Saturday morning class. We will be having a adopt-a-mile this Saturday, and our adopt-a-mile in the wintertime starts at 9:00 a.m. We will not be ready for you. If you come at 8:00, you may, you can start, but we won't be there. This is because we consider it to be usually too cold and dangerous for people to be out on the roadways. It's really dark until later in the morning during this time of the year, so we would hope that everybody will stick to our schedule. We do this for your safety and for your comfort. So, we look forward to seeing all our volunteers out on Saturday morning. We have plots available now in the Smyrna Community Garden, and you may, again, call my office or email me at akirk@smyrnagav, and we will give you all the information you need to lease a plot. And finally, we have jonquils available still at the Smyrna Recycling Center, and it's not too late to plant them. And we also have leftover tree seedlings. These are white dogwoods. They're in very good shape, and this is the perfect time of year to plant these trees. So, if you would like a free tree seedling, you may just stop by the recycling center and just speak with Kathy Chapman, the manager there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you, Ann. A lot of exciting things going on with that, Mr. Mayor. I yield.
Ms. Taryn Nullawich.
Thank you. I would first like to invite Tony J. Howard forward to give an update on the Finance Department.
Just two quick items tonight. The first is that we have mailed the Public Utilities Billings. We did that last week, and those are due February 22nd. And then also, at the end of this week, we will be mailing out the delinquent property tax notices, and those are going to be due on February 28th. So, everybody needs to get their payment in as soon as possible to make sure that we don't have to proceed with placing liens against those properties. I'll head, thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, I'd like to invite Community Relations Director Jennifer Bennett forward to talk about all of the fun goings-on in Smyrna.
Sorry for the delay and the long walk. This is the colder season. We don't typically have outdoor events, but I want to remind you to follow our social media feeds. We do make announcements on there for things like the Keep Smyrna Beautiful shredding event coming up and the availability of jonquel bulbs and other things. Also, library events. You can find the link, if you're not familiar with Facebook, you can find the link from the city website, smyrnacity.com. Go to the bottom of the page, and you'll find our Twitter feed and our Facebook feed. You can sign up from there. And I do want to mention that we seem to have had a fairly successful evening with granicas tonight. We still have some, some things that we're working on, but we are looking forward to the possibility of going live in the next meeting or two, which means that you'll be able to view our meetings live on just about any internet-connected device. And when we get closer to that, we will let you know. We'll make the announcement through the city website and through social media first. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you very much. I am very pleased tonight that we are able to welcome David Lee to be our incoming Police Chief and Mary Wallace Moore to the city as our new head of the library. I think we were so fortunate to have been so well-served for so many years by Chief Hook and by Michael Siegler, and I'm so excited to see what is in store for us next with these new department heads. Thank you very much. With that, I yield.
Ms. Andrew Bluestein.
At this time, I would like to invite Ken Sudworth of Community Development up for...
Just like to give you a few numbers to let you know how we finished 2012. We were actually, when you put all the numbers together, we were actually 9% ahead of 2011. If you want just some specifics in terms of the calendar year, 2012 to 2011, in terms of new dwelling units, we actually were able to break the 200 mark. Last month, I was at 190. We actually had 13, so we ended up with 203 new units. In 2011, we had 120, so you can see a substantial difference there. In terms of looking at it just from fiscal year, we are at 82% in, as of today, of what we were for FY '12. So, we will far exceed the 136 units we had done then, if you just look at it from a fiscal year aspect. Finally, I'm going to, I'm going to bring one other number in here that I normally don't talk about, but this was a year-end number that I thought was fairly substantial to just reinforce the fact that the numbers have continued to improve on that, and that is the number of building inspections. Obviously, every time we have a new unit, that results in a number of building inspections. A new dwelling unit actually results in about 14 different inspections, some of which occur at the same, at the same time, but there's at least 14 on a residential unit. In 2011, in terms of total number inspections, we had 7,466. In 2012, we had 9,171. So, that's a difference of 632. That's a 20% increase. So, every number that we look at showed a positive sign, no matter how you wanted to slice it. But the bottom line, we were at least 9% up in 2012 versus 2011.
Thank you so much. And it was no surprise today to hear on the news that the city that did, the city that did the best in the nation last year for housing and housing starts and staying, their values holding was Washington, D.C. So, other than that, but the nation is moving up, so, but anyway, thank you. That's all I have, sir.
Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Hopefully, Vision Committee will be having another meeting in the next couple of weeks. That's Ms. Nullawich, Mr. Fennell, and myself to move forward, and I think we're going to be working with Doug Stoner, who's going to join our group for a while and come up with some ideas for us, and Mr. Fennell already has been working on some of that, I think, so has Ms. Nullawich. So, we're looking forward to that. Once again, I want to thank everyone in the city who's working on the scrannicas. Nobody understands, unless you're right here in the middle of it, how complicated and complex it is and how many people have worked on it. And I want to thank Jessica Melton for doing an outstanding job while she's serving in the library, doing about four or five other jobs. So, she's just done an outstanding job, and I can't name everybody that's been involved, but Jennifer and Samantha and just Chris Addicks. It is just ongoing, and Jennifer's great news of hopefully, we can go live in the next maybe two meetings, if not the first meeting. But our whole plan at the beginning has been to make sure we got all of the kinks and all of the bugs worked out that we possibly could before we started the live streaming, and we're working toward that. So, I keep asking for your patience, but we're getting there, and once we have it, it's going to be quite, quite an accomplishment, but it's taken a whole village, a whole city to get this done. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. We're about a year into our new SPOLOST program that was voted in in 2011. I want to give a quick update where we are on a couple of big projects. Unlike the 2005 SPOLOST where all the big projects were done at the end, this particular SPOLOST has the big projects being worked on in the beginning of the program. One of them is what we're calling the Ward Street Connector. It's going to connect Ward Street with eventually Atlanta Road through Belmont Hills. We're contractually obligated with the school system as part of us selling the property to them to have that particular roadway completed by July 2013 in time for the start of school this fall. We are well ahead of schedule on that, and those who have been driving along Ward Street may have noticed that we have the city's first roundabout located there at the intersection of Ward Street and the Connector Road there. That is a $1.4 million project, and hopefully, we will get that opened up here pretty soon. I would say probably within, you know, late spring at the earliest. The other high-profile project we have is the Concord Road Improvements. We awarded the contract to C.W. Matthews last fall, and since that point, they have been working with Georgia Power, AT&amp;T, Charter, and other folks to move the power lines. If you drive along Concord Road, you may notice that there are a lot of poles already in place in what we're calling Phase 1 of the project, which extends from South Cobb Drive over to Evelyn Street, I'm sorry, King Springs Street. Once those poles are in place and then Georgia Power has their lines moved over, then Charter will come through and move their lines over, along with AT&amp;T and anybody else who may be on the poles. But we do anticipate that we should start seeing some construction on that phase of the project within the next month or two. And finally, those who attend, who visit our Taliesin Pool in the summertime will see... And finally, those who attend, who visit our Taliesin Pool in summertime will see a renovated Taliesin Pool house this summer. If work has not started yet already, it will soon, on a complete renovation that includes new roofing, plumbing and electrical work, heating and air conditioning equipment, new concession window, new floors, new paint, new wall finishes, et cetera, all for a total project of cost of $91,490.84. For those who are interested in the Smyrna SPOLOST program and wishing to follow it, you can visit smyrnas, www.smyrnasplos.com for all that information. Finally, I would like to say how much I'm looking forward to working with our new library director and new police chief. Our new police chief in particular has been around quite a bit in the last week or so, getting to know some folks and doing what he needs to do, so he starts work early on February the 4th. So with that, I yield.
City Attorney, Mr. Scott. Ms. Samantha, do you have anything?
Just wanted to briefly say thank you all for your patience in the, as we work through Granicas and I think it's going really well. Thank you.
We do not, we do not have show calls here in this item, number 10. No one has signed up for Citizens Input. I'd like to tell this meeting adjourned at about 8:43.